Good evening, welcome to Oconee County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Tuesday, March the 5th. If you're joining us virtually, to comment during the public comment portions of the meeting, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. After a moment of silence, we're going to ask Chuck Horton to lead us into pledge. Please stand. Thank you.
The United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, first item would be to approve the agenda. I would like to request a couple of changes under section seven, item number two. Like to add discuss, consider the lease agreement and contract ratification for the election building. And then number three under that section is ratify the contract for construction services here at the courthouse.
Make a motion that we approve the agenda with additions.
Motion second, all in favor?
Ah.
Thank you, motion carries. Our next item is statements and remarks from citizens. This is for anything not on the agenda tonight.
I'm Helen Haynes and I live in Chadwick subdivision of Oconee County. This month marks one year.
Ms. Haynes, I have to say you can't speak at this tonight. It's totally inappropriate.
You don't know my subject. It's not a zoning issue.
If you're speaking about the ethics complaint that you made, it's not appropriate to speak to while it's while it's in front of the administrative hearing officer.
It's been over a year.
Ma'am, it's not appropriate. You've made a complaint against this board. You can't speak to them about this issue.
Anyone else? Anyone virtually? Thank you. Any statements or remarks from commissioners? I would like to remind everybody, the public comment period is open for Coal Springs Road closure. This form is on the website for your convenience to submit your comments. With that, we'll move to approval of minutes. We have a regular meeting from March 1st, agenda setting meeting for March 29th, and also the town hall meeting for March 31st.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as submitted.
We have a motion second, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Our next item is recognition of April is Oconee County Safe Digging Month, and Commissioner Saxon is going to read that resolution for.
Whereas thousands of times each year, the underground infrastructure in Georgia is damaged by those who do not have underground lines located prior to digging, resulting in service interruption, environmental damage, and threat to public safety. And whereas in 2005, the Federal Communication Commission has designated 811 to provide contractors and homeowners a simple number to contact utility operators to request the location of underground lines at the intended dig site. And whereas the Oconee County Utility Coordinator Committee, a stakeholder driven organization dedicated to the prevention of damage to underground utilities in Georgia, promotes the national 811 notification system and Georgia 811 in an effort to reduce these damages. And whereas damage prevention is a shared responsibility, and by using safe digging practice, the contractors and homeowners of Oconee County can save time, money, and help keep our infrastructure safe and connected. Therefore, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners of Oconee County, Georgia, I do hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as Oconee County Safe Digging Month, and encourage contractors and homeowners throughout the Oconee County to always contact 811 before digging. Safe digging is no accident. Signed, John Daniel, 330, 2022.
Did you want to get a picture? Okay. All right.
April 3, 2022. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit the library online to access its services. Because of you, libraries transform lives and communities.
And then we're going to move into our zoning matters. Our first item is rezone P 21-0264 OS Properties, care of Milton Garland. This is OIP to B2. It's 1.85 acres at 1050 and 1060 Talus Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is P 21-0264, Milton Garland Senior OS Properties Inc., located just off of Monroe Highway, Highway 78, off of Talus Street. These are the two parcels, subject parcels, B 01, L 002B, and 003B. They are currently zoned OIP in the community village character area. Again, the request is to rezone the property from OIP to B2 for a pet grooming and boarding facility. This is the concept plan that you have in your application packets. This is a zoomed in version of that, enlarged version of that. These are the architectural images that were submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with the following conditions, one, two, and three are our standard conditions. And number four, the use of the subject property should be restricted to the proposed pet grooming and boarding facility. Number five, the 50-foot landscape buffer adjacent to R1 zoning shall be vegetated throughout with evergreen plant material to form an opaque year-round screen. A six-foot tall imitation wood vinyl fence will also be installed adjacent to said residential zoning. Number six, all kennels, pens, cages, runs, and other facilities for containment of animals shall be located within a fully enclosed building with adequate provisions to ensure that noise and odors are completely contained within said building. Number seven, the architectural style of the proposed building shall be similar to the majority of existing buildings within Dickens Corner subdivision, with a minimum roof pitch of 612 and 80% brick or stone on each side of the building. Planning Commission recommended approval with staff conditions with two exceptions. Number six, they wish to add or within an outdoor run with a masonry wall matching the exterior materials of the building. And number seven, striking the minimum roof pitch of 612.
Now, we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner.
I'm Todd Aggie. I work for Milton Garland, who regretfully couldn't be here today. But we think this facility would be good for the area, all the with welfare behind there. It would be able to serve as a boarding facility for animals and also for grooming for the animals as well. We're okay with the planning commission recommendations with the masonry outdoor runs and striking away the minimum roof pitch. We can, the 80% brick or stone, we're okay with those items. Any questions or?
We may have some in a minute. Thank you. Ms. Powell?
Mike Power. I own land across 78 from this proposed project. And first of all, I know Mr. Garland, known him for years, does quality work. You can anticipate that he'll do what he's proposed to do. I think there's a demand for this service out there in the area, and I think it would be compatible with my property, part of that property, which is already zoned for a single-family subdivision, 152 acres. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for this? Rezone? Anyone virtually? Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion and open up any questions from commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I've got one. If you could go back to the site plan. Top left corner of that. Trying to, is that a, that's a grain of cheese that goes through that adjoining lot?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Right, and what is that structure there at the corner at the angle of that? What is that?
That's an outlet structure for an existing detention pond.
So the detention pond is there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That was installed with this subdivision when it was created.
Okay, so the house that has been constructed there, so that detention pond, it belongs to that property?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not part of the property owners association, anything like that?
There may be an agreement with the with the other parcels. I don't know off the top of my head, but there may be.
But I'm pretty sensitive about when water goes across people's property lines. I mean, to make sure that it was properly easement and that. Now, the planning commission talked about an outdoor run, but the comment is about a masonry wall. What kind of described what the run is going to look like?
Sure, so my understanding is the run would be along this side of the building, and there would, it would be enclosed with a masonry wall instead of a fence that may have slats or lattices in it. So that it was a wall in enclosing that run area.
All right, so as far as the surface of that run, is there any requirements it'd be, whatever?
Right, that's right.
So that run will have, as far as when you're looking at it from the street, what will the public see when they?
A wall.
A wall, okay. And I think in the comments that was made at the planning commission that as far as the use of the outdoor run would be only during the daylight hours or during operation hours?
I believe they mentioned that was typical.
Typical.
I don't know that that was proffered as a condition or not, but it was typically used then. The animals, pets were inside at night.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We'll entertain a motion.
I'm making motion we approve rezon P 21-0264 OS Properties Incorporated, CEO Milton Garland, Jr., OIP office to B2. One plus eight, five acres, 1050 and 1060 Talus Street undeveloped with the seven conditions and the changes.
Exactly.
We have a motion, the second approved rezon request, P 21-0264, with the seven conditions as modified by the planning commission. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Our next item is rezon request, P 22-0011. This is Victoria Duckworth. It's AG to AR. It's 5.16 acres at 2331 Snow's Mill Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is P 22-0011, Victoria Duckworth owner, located off of Snow's Mill Road. This is the aerial and showing the subject parcel of A 04006C. It's currently zoned AG in the rural places character area. And again, the request is a rezon from AG to AR in order to subdivide the property into two, two-acre lots, and construct a secondary entrance to Lane Creek subdivision. This is the concept plan that you have in your application packets enlarged. These are the architectural images that have been proposed. And staff recommends conditional approval with our standard three conditions. And then number four, if the proposed lots are developed as part of Lane Creek subdivision phase five, no structure shall be installed within 40 feet of the rear property line lot of lots one and two. A 20-foot wide vegetated buffer shall be installed along the rear property lines of lots one and two, in keeping with other lots along the perimeter of Lane Creek subdivision. Said buffer shall be shown culinary plat and site construction plans for Lane Creek phase five. Planning Commission recommends approval subject to staff regulations.
Now, we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Good evening, my name is Scott Haynes. I work for WNA Engineering, reside at 281 Clock Belt Road, Ogar. Please bring this before you tonight, is request to rezon the five acres as mentioned in staff's report at 2331 Snow's Mill Road from AG to AR. This is on behalf of Mr. Chris Hill and Mr. Michael Phelps of Hillgrove Homes. We are seeking this approval to permit the creation of two, two-acre lots and an access for Snow's, from Snow's Mill Road to the fifth phase of Lane Creek plantation. Proposed location of the new access, which was depicted on the plan submitted before you, would conform to Lane Creek's original 1999 conditions of approval, which identified an emergency entrance and exit, which that time was to Rogers Road, which is unapproved. This approval of this request would allow relocation of that access to Snow's Mill Road. The two proposed lots would meet current area and frontage standards for the AR district and our access from that proposed Lane Creek entrance. Both of these lots would be developed as single-family homes, in keeping with what has already been done in the Lane Creek subdivision. We have reviewed the conditions that were placed on this request, part of the planning commission's recommendation for approval, and also staff's report. We have no desire to ask for any modification of that language. With me tonight is Mr. Michael Phelps, representing Hillgrove Homes. Either of us would be happy to answer any questions you might have at the appropriate time, and we humbly ask for your approval vote tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Powell?
Mike Power again. I'm the owner of Lane Creek Plantation, and I'm happy to say that this will make a lot of folks that live in Lane Creek Plantation happy. It will give them an excellent exit entrance in the back that we haven't had, and it's a far superior exit and entrance in the back than was originally proposed a long time ago on Rogers Road. So I'm in favor of it. I've approved the homes that would go on those additional lots, and we'll continue to monitor everything that's done there. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Phelps?
Good evening, thank you for your time. My partner Chris Hill couldn't make it today, but I'm a co-owner of Hillwood Homes, and we're planning on, we're already building, we're getting started houses in the first part of Lane Creek, some existing lots there, and we're just looking forward to the opportunity to hopefully continuing that to the back. And I think this would be a great back entrance and back exit, that exit way out of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for the rezon? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the meeting and open up any questions from commissioners. I guess one I got, this would, this will be part of Lane Creek as far as covenants and that type of thing? Yes, sir, okay. Good. You got anything?
That was kind of important, but Doc, could you put up the conditions, make sure I'm understanding. Number four, what I'm hearing is these two lots are going to be part of Lane Creek subdivision?
That's correct.
Right, but your number four, I'm a little confused. It says if lots are developed as part, is there an option that they're not part?
Well, to my knowledge, the property hasn't closed yet, so we left that option there.
Okay, so if it's not part of Lane Creek, does that requirement of number four go away?
That's correct, they could develop the two lots.
So as far as all the buffer and all that, just be the normal buffers?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to clarify, because it said if, you know, I just wanted to make sure.
Any other questions? All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve rezon P 22-0011 for Victoria M. Duckworth, AG to AR, 5.16 acres, at 2331 Snow's Mill Road Residential.
With the four conditions?
With the conditions as presented, exactly.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve rezon P 22-0011 with four conditions. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Our next item is variance request, P 22-0008.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this came before you at your last meeting, so this is P 22-0008. I will show you the amended application that shows a different architectural standard than what was previously submitted. This was, this was developed by the applicant and provided to us, and I do believe you have in your packets and your memo that I forwarded to you earlier, the agreement between the HOA of Wendy Creek and the property owner. This does meet everyone's standards. So with that, you were, you are, it's to you now to determine the outcome of the setback of that, that request.
So we've already had the public hearing on this, so it's just if you have any questions, the owner of the properties here and nearby seeing the documents. So we have any questions? Okay.
The only question I had from last time, and God, you might be able to answer this, but it goes to environmental health, just to make sure that all the permits will go through and make sure the environmental health.
We will, we will send that to environmental health, and actually, the applicant did provide the septic tank of previous approval, and so that is in the front yard. And so maybe there is some repair area in the front or in the rear, but either way, it will be required to be reviewed by environmental.
Thank you. Any other questions? We'll entertain a motion.
I'm making motion to approve variance, P 22-0008, Penny Everhart, to reduce the rear and yard setback for an accessory building greater than 144 square feet, plus minus .98 acres, 1040 Creek Bridge Drive Residential with the one condition, exactly.
We have a motion and second to prove variance request, P 22-0008 with the condition? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next item is variance number P 22-0009. This is to reduce the rear setback on accessory building greater than 144 square feet. It's 1.02 acres, located at 3381 Madison Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, P 22-0009. This is the aerial and tax parcel, C 05, C 022. It's currently zoned AR in country states, and this is the concept plan that you have in your packet showing the existing shed, 14 feet and six and a half feet on the property line. Photos of the existing shed. And again, the property owner's requesting variance to UDC Section 41001(c)(2) and UDC Table 4.1 to reduce the rear setback from 40 feet to six and a half feet, and the side yard setback from 15 feet to 14 feet for the existing shed. Staff recommends approval with two conditions, that the reduction shall be as stated to six and a half and to 14.
Thank you. Now, we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Our caller is installing that shed early. I didn't realize that. But it's a pre-existing shed, you see it's six and a half feet. The neighbor to my west is fine with it. He asked if he wanted to provide a letter of support. I think it was necessary. And for the rear setback, there's a fence in between according to the policies and regulations. And so I just asked that we could bring the setback closer so I don't have to put the fence forward. And the main purpose of it is if it's 40 feet forward of that, the purpose of the yard is really to have some room for my kids to play, and it would kind of put it in. Beneficial if we could keep the waters.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for? Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portions and open up to any questions from commissioners. Okay.
Mr. Britton, I've got a question for you. That, you can stay back there, sorry. As far as the location of the building, did you check with environmental health to make sure that it's not going to impact your reserve area or your existing septic system? Okay. Mr. Herring, is there a permit going to be required for this?
Yes, we, after this is approved, if it's approved, this location, then we would require that they provide us a permit.
And it would be routed to environmental. Okay, all right, very good.
Any other questions? We'll entertain a motion.
I'm making motion to approve rezon P twenty-two dash zero 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 nine as submitted, sir.
Anyway, a motion and a second to approve variance request P twenty-two dash zero 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 nine with two.
That is with conditions.
Yes, with two conditions, yeah. So mostly approved variance P twenty-two dash zero 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 nine with two conditions. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item to discuss and consider the lease agreement and contract ratification for the ward building. Daniel?
So I'll, I'll talk about the contract ratification first. Um, one of the transactions will be a section ten thirty-one light can exchange. For their files, they have to have a contract. Uh, the only thing you're doing on that is approving John signing it. It specifically says it's subject to all the terms of the bid proposal and what they said. So in effect, all we're doing with the contract ratification is we're just saying, yes, we understand we're participating in a section ten thirty-one exchange at no cost to the county. So other than that, there's no difference than what you've already approved on the sale of that. Um, on the ward building, we have a lease, um, approved by the, uh, the, who, the purchaser slash landlord. That would be at two thousand dollars a month for a year with some options to renew on the, um, uh, we pay insurance and taxes. Um, on the elections building, uh, it's three thousand dollars a month, same general terms, but we have some specific provisions in that during the term of the lease, the landlord cannot for any reason come on the property without written, prior written consent to protect the, uh, the sanctity of the elections. Um, both leases have been gone over by the attorneys on the other side, and they were, they were very gracious at accepting all the changes that I, I thought that we had to have because the county was tenant. And, uh, they're, they're ready to be approved, and I, I recommend approval on both leases.
Any questions? Do we have any public comment? Anyone virtually? Are they, wouldn't, with that, we'll entertain a motion. We can do both leases at one motion if you'd like.
So I, a motion to approve the, uh, let's say the pro forma contract and the, uh, the leases on the ward building and the, uh, um, elections building.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the contracts and lease agreements for the election building and ward building. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is a contract for construction services for the courthouse. As you remember, we did a budget amendment a couple of months ago, and, uh, so they're going to present the contract based on the dollar amount that has to be approved, uh, by the Board of Commissioners. So Alex.
You, Commissioners, uh, we have a contract for your approval for Bain Development Group through Gordian. Uh, this is to finish the second and third floor of the courthouse expansion to a white box standard. So basically putting up drywall, putting down some flooring, doing a drop ceiling, putting some extra lights, like to put match coat. Uh, the budget for this is two hundred thousand dollars, and this contract is for a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, uh, seven oh nine eighty-eight, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for Alex? Good. Any public comment? Anyone virtually? Thank you. We'll entertain a motion then.
So moved.
We have a motion and second to approve the contract. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Does any commissioner wish any item to be removed from consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I'm making motion to approve the consent items as presented, sir.
A motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. We do not have any item in executive session, so Commissioner Saxon?
Motion adjourned, second.
Thank you. We are adjourned.